Financial position for the city. The contract is only supposed to be four months, however, I have not seen the city post any job offerings, or job, uh, anybody to apply for the job for the city financial year, or whatever the case. I haven't yet to see the city posted, so I thought we were gonna do that. I thought that was the decision that was made when we gave JJ just four months. So, um, I would like to see the city at least look into trying to find somebody that can work well with the city and work for the city, but not just use us. Um, other than that, that's it really about it. I appreciate you, thank you.
We can take one hour. Okay, um, what, what we are offering here is a complete, um, asset management system which is on the web. What, what is an asset? If you consider a computer, or if you consider a pump, or a vessel, or a pipe, or whatnot. And if you consider a road, a culvert, or a light pole. Any of these things that the city owns can be considered as an asset. And that asset can be, um, maintained and managed through this system, which is a web-based system. It can be hosted by y'all if you decide to host it, or we can do it for you. It's available on the web, as well as on a handheld, uh, device. So y'all can go and update the asset, and you can, uh, enter the information, you can answer when it was purchased, how was the life of the asset, so it automatically will tell you when the asset is ready to tie. Then, if there is a problem with the asset, means if there is a ditch on the road, or if a, um, some light bulb is broken or whatnot, citizens can request, um, a work in need to be done, or one of your members, whoever is maintenance people. They can go and create a request on the web, or using a handheld device. And that will come to somebody, a central location, hopefully the physical plant or the maintenance department. And then they can go and work on this, uh, request. They can create a work order, enter all the time and material on the work order. They can enter all the material, all consumables that they use. Um, and they can close the work order. Once the work order is closed, your cost is calculated, you can maintain how much it's costing to fix a particular window unit, or, uh, a part of a hall or whatnot. And that information is all available on the web. And if you decide to use capital projects, say you want to move, uh, say it's, it's gonna cost you a lot of money, and you're going to hire a couple of vendors to do that, and they can do that using the system. And if you create a purchase order, or pay invoices, they all are tracked in the same system. And that, you can slice and dice the data, however you want to present yourself. And the data is already there in the system. And it's a completely web-based system, there is no, um, loose ends in the system. Um, if you want to track all your budgets, or maintenance department, or all the departments, we have the provision to do that. And if you have multiple buildings, and you want to track all your utility consumption, such as electricity, gas, whatnot, you can do it with, using our system. Um, and all the documentation, like the drawings, the, um, copies of invoices, copies of videos, or copies of, um, operating instructions for a specific equipment. All those things can be stored in the, uh, system in a central place. So if somebody wants to go and look at how this roof was built, or how this, what's the layout of this building, they can quickly go to the building and look at the layout. And the building details, we have pictures as well, so somebody can take a picture of the part of the hall and send you saying that, or upload it to the website, saying that this is a picture of the part hall. So you can, after fixing it, you can actually take a pict- new picture and, uh, load it on the system. Um, so this is all, the system is all about, within five minutes. And, I mean, we can take one and a half hours, two hours to talk about the entire capabilities. Um, as a company, we are located out of, uh, Corbin County. And Corbin County is using this system. In Exeter, we have other systems for law enforcement agencies. That's being used nationally and internationally. For, I watch from the B C, Detroit, um, Edmonton, Canada, and Houston, City of Houston. They all are in, uh, City of Pasadena, they all are using our system. So with this, I will leave you to ask me any questions, then I talk.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is our plan, uh, and today's maintenance.
Yes, 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 this is also. When I talked about work order, what happens is, if you have an asset, and, uh, say asset is a vehicle. And the vehicle says that you have... Okay, so, this is, um, first of all, read out the components of an asset management. And when you talk about components, then first in terms of history is the location management. Means you have to define all your locations. Locations such as your buildings, or your zones, or areas, or whatnot. Wherever you want to track that particular piece of asset, you do the location management first. Then you come to asset management, you track all your assets. You store buildings, roads, uh, culverts, ditches, light poles, whatnot. All those types of assets can be stored in that asset management. The other module is, um, work management, I just talked about. There are two things in the work management, one is work request, and the other one is work order. Work request is where somebody can request work. Work order is where you do the work, and you capture all the, uh, data that, that is pertinent work. Like Mel Jackson just talked about preventive maintenance, that is part of the work management module. What you have to do is, say if your asset is a vehicle, and the vehicle needs oil change every three thousand miles, or if it is a, say this building is an asset, and your exterior apartment, you know, that, that requires every five years, you have to replace. Or if it is a window unit, and you have to replace a filter every three months or whatnot. And all those things we go and set it by asset. And as and when the time or the counter, counter means in this case mileage, uh, comes through that limit, then it will automatically create a work request on hand, a work order for somebody to go and act on it. And that's how you do the preventive maintenance, uh, work. And all the, we have the project management and the budget management. You can create all capital projects within the city, and you can load all those projects here. And you can track budgets against the projects. A project costs you a hundred thousand dollars to do it, and then periodically you receive work. Um, and that work will be, or invoices will be, say, twenty thousand, five thousand, whatnot. And then it will keep reducing your amount and tell you where you are in the, um, in the budget of the, the project. Deficiency management is something that you work through all your facilities, and roads, and buildings, and whatnot. And you know, there is a, uh, the roof is leaking, or you can say that there is a hole in the wall. Or there is a, you know, ceiling tile is broken, or whatnot. All those things you go and, um, collect it by area, or by building, or by road segment, or whatnot. And store it here, and then later on, you can ask your engineer to go and post those things out by using standard databases. And that's going to tell you how many deficiencies you have, that will tell you how much money you have to spend in fixing all the issues within the city. I don't know how you are doing it, but this is a way to do it. And you can do it by working across all these places and use a handheld device by entering the data. And the data comes to the server, and that is available to anyone, everyone who wants to see that.
So city council can track, uh, maintenance costs, they can track...
Absolutely.
...pulp, getting replaced with licensed, protected, uh, systems have the ability then to report, uh, incident, a bad meter, or, uh, and then that work is tracked by their system.
Yes, sir. And the citizen actually can go to a website, and from their home, you can go and enter that. And obviously, everyone has smartphones, you can go on your smartphone, take a picture of the issue, and you enter the data. You know, just basic information, where it is, what is the issue, take a picture, attach it, and then send it to the, uh, to somebody who, who is looking after all these issues, of course. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm sure you have a physical plant or the maintenance department who is going to be looking at all those things. And actually, the city, uh, council can look at, uh, all the budget, all the cost associated with all the work that is being done. And you can even do it by place, by, uh, your placing the, what is it, the area, or position, or whatnot. Uh, in your own areas, you know, you can track all your expenses. And you can see how much money you have to, um, forking in order to replace bad assets. Because when you buy an asset, everything has a life, and once the life goes, and it depreciated fully, then you have to replace them. And instead of waiting, uh, for two years, three years, five years down the road, every year you can say, well, what is my budget going to be to replace the asset in three thousand fifty, forty-five? And it'll tell you, these are the assets, this is how much it will cost to replace all the assets without, without the replacement. And that's something that deficiency management does. And from the deficiency management, you say, well, you know, I can go and fix that door handle tomorrow, and you can convert that to a work order. Or if there is a major issue like paint, and you need paint, create a paint project, or, you know, sign into a contractor, and you collect all the painting, uh, issue, and create a capital project, and then track that project in that project management module. Um, vendors and contract management, you can maintain all your vendors, those who are working on either the work order or on the capital projects, and you can, mm, manage their contracts. One vendor have, may have five contracts, each contract may have different, uh, expiry, and you can track them here. Um, all the, uh, documentations, uh, please, care about these leases partnerships, that, that is in the whole industry. So, uh, you can track that, but I don't think that's applicable to the cities. All the documentation that you generate along the process, or you have drawings, operating instructions, or whatnot, you can upload to the, uh, website and store it against a building, or against an asset, or against a road segment, or whatnot. It's up to you whether you want to store all those licenses, this is a good one. Um, location management, these are all, all the details, uh, behind each module, what I just talked about. Um, and that's, that's about it, I mean, within, within a max hour. But any question you have, um, I mean, I would be very happy.
My question to the audience question, when you consult for installation and operation?
Well, uh, installing, installing the system, okay. If, if you install the system the way it is, and don't want to make any configuration changes, we can turn it down within two weeks. And you're talking about one, after he's a full-time equipment, working for one or two weeks, and we can bring the system up to that.
Present the cost, cost of cost.
Oh, okay. The cost of, okay, there are two components to the cost, okay, two, two components to the cost. The cost of system, that is the licensing cost for every software, like if you buy a piece of software, you have to pay the license fee, and license fees, they would send an annual fee of fifteen thousand dollars. That's flat, because that's, that's a published price to the state government, and to families, and to citizens, and everybody. And considering your city is a small city, I mean, we cannot do everything, you know, one thing fits everyone. Since your city is a smaller city, and we can discount that to maybe ten thousand dollars a year. But that's why we charge two, uh, medium-sized cities in, in our...
That's, how much do you, ten thousand dollars?
Ten thousand dollars per year. Then there will be a one-year, uh, I mean, one-time configuration fee, which will be two to four weeks of time of an individual working with somebody within the city to bring the website up and running, to load all your assets, to bring it to a certain level, that may be about two to four weeks of somebody's time, which is at eighty bucks an hour. If it is a hundred, a hundred hours, eight thousand dollars, if it is two hundred hours, sixteen thousand dollars. So ours is very plain and simple. Uh, and we can host the system for you in our data center in Houston. Or if you have it in the data center, we can load it on your website. Okay. What is that? Okay, good.
Uh, if you were to add any additional assets, do you have to go back and pay the, you know, the hours?
No, sir. If you want to add any additional assets, it is going to show you the screens, you can go to the web and learn. Or you can use a app and load it on an Android seven, uh, tablet, and you can add it on your own. So it's, it's really, we don't want to get involved into the, uh, process. And also, the system is, um, what you call robust. Means if you have a clerk or a person who is entering the asset, they would be able to see only few screens of few transactions. Whereas if it's a manager or a supervisor, they would be able to see additional data. And that's, that's the way the system is designed, and that's what those, one or two weeks is going to take to configure who is going to look at what, and how it is going to be done. Once the, you know, authority of, uh, delegation of authority is configured, once the data is entered, then the system is used to you.
Well, I think the council wanted pretty much, since I've had a workshop, you know, so...
Would be, I, I think that's, that's a wonderful idea, because this, this, this information cannot be disseminated within five to 10 minutes of a, of a time. And we, we, that's what we want to propose, that we'll come back again, and maybe we can give you, in one hour, one and a half hours, a detailed, uh, you know, um, presentation of the system, to walk you through screen by screen, transaction by transaction, and show you how it can benefit the city. Any other questions, from the citizens, or from the council, or the...
We're taking a little, if you want, uh, if you gave a couple of presentations, got your contact information on...
Yes, sir, and I, I'm allowed to leave some tasks here, and, uh, for you, for y'all to, um, anybody who... Anybody from the, the audience, I can...
I, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
And how many county governments you're working with?
Uh, Corbin County, one of them, they are using our system.
Right, how many?
Uh, that's, that's for one, it's a, it's a new concept, new product, so not many.
Do you have any municipal authorities yet?
Uh, we are working with them.
Does anyone?
Yes, sir, no.
Okay.
Let's, we have...
It's okay, no, no.
We have, outside, outside the galaxy, Houston, they have about two hundred and forty plus, uh, what do you call the, uh, parishes. And they all manage their assets through the system. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. You got my email, or just give some, send an email.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I have number seven. Uh, the city approving a property tax revision for Metcalfe, George, S. D., and now, now, we should get out of the contract, and the seven sheet, one one zero zero, zero zero seven, one zero, and zero. And the cap seven two, one zero zero, zero, zero seven, one zero, one, zero, 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 zero. And seven two, one one zero, 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 seven, one one, one zero, zero, zero.
Overpaid the type of two. Three of ten. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it was saying that the payment, uh, was for strong off to the city, to put around the soul of the city, the cemetery. And we received the, the, the receipt of the sale.
Okay.
We were from seven, we were from, uh, property tax, we're representing the Metcalfe, George, S. D.,
The motion and secondly, your question. I'm telling you kids by saying aye. I'm going to go ahead. I don't know, eight, discussing the second, uh, twenty fifteen annual audit financial statements.
Mayor, city council, citizens, uh, presenting the usual annual private statement, uh, audit financial statements. I'm in with the mayor, and we discussed the audit in detail. Uh, point out the emphasis to three or two pages one. Uh, basically, that's the most important thing to be sorry. You know, people are usually looking for my financial statements. It's a plain opinion. Basically, uh, there are three types of opinions, and after you. There's a standard opinion, which is just one page. Uh, there's seven type of opinion, which is disqualified, basically, I would add a six paragraph, everything is okay except for. And then there's a third, a word, a disclaimer opinion, basically, uh, these financial statements are not used for public information. And then I would discuss it in detail, and then you will hear what I mean. There is a fourth one, after also, but basically, if rather happens. Before I return the books, I said, these books are too bad, I can't argue. I return, yeah, I return the books and the money, everything. Uh, then rather happens, you know, something, someone, uh, everything can't, everything cannot be argued. You don't have, I can just, I make adjustments in my articles, basically. I see sometimes need change, and I discuss it, so kind of, right, people, I feel, you need to change this number, if that can change it. Uh, I can just make so many adjustments. After I make so many adjustments, I'm no more. And I can argue for different reasons. So this is, uh, uh, you're applying for grants? They don't look at this page one, they're not looking at anything else. They want to make sure that you are off the terms financial statements correctly. If you're looking for a loan or something, they're only going to look at the other numbers and everything, but they already do a list of those. For the grant, like most law projects, they have to go to the artist, and they want to make sure that you are keeping financial statements, and this is the page one. Question.
Mr. Payne for the rest of your CPA.
Uh, yes, uh, only CPA is going to provide audit statements. Uh, and you have to register with the state. So if someone calls to you, say, our CPA, and you give them a check, you might want to check them, and you get a register. It costs, if not, if someone finds out, they'll just say, well, they took your money, you go get your money back, and you're not taking this all.
Can you report to the next thing? Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't know, eight, and instead, I think to, 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 I don't know, to discuss and consider accepting. I accept, and I said before, if you want. It's a name that we accept, the twenty fifteen annual audit financial statement, that Mr. Epstein CPA. Say, we move forward second, that we accept the twenty fifteen annual audit financial statement that presented by Mr. Epstein CPA. With motion and secondly, your question.
Your question.
I'm telling you kids by saying aye. I'm going to go ahead. I don't know, eight, discussing, consider action, first, from the building process, for figure out a roof repair. Subject to allow independent inspection of the, to determine scope of what required, Mr. Jones.
Yes, counsel, uh, they, the estimates I was, was left me when I came back, the lowest estimate on the, the repaired this roof is twenty-four thousand dollars. I cannot see where it was independently inspected. Now, let me explain this building. There are eighteen downcomers in this building. Any of them you can see on the outside of the walls. All of them collect water from the roof into the gutters, and just cross inside the wall, around the perimeter of the building. Those downcomers protrude up through that gutter about three inches, and eat, and, at the, at the protrusion, those gutters are sealed by epoxy. Now, over time, the epoxy can deteriorate due to the weather that we live in around here. So, what I'm recommending is, let's get a third party expert in metal buildings to come up here and inspect this building before you go spend twenty-four thousand dollars. The, the, the top of this building is tucked, tummy-grooved, like you have at your house, but it's metal, they're overlapping each other. The only place water comes is when it hits this roof, it goes to the perimeters, goes into those drain gutters, and then it goes to the downspouts to the outside. If any of those gutters are leaking around that epoxy, it's going to end up in the walls. So, I'm just saying, for a few hundred dollars, let's get a, an extra, expert out here, in Mr. Linecker, from Currie, to take a thorough inspection of this roof before you spend twenty-four thousand dollars.
So, was the original, was that for the mold?
Now, you have. What I, what I compared, there were four estimates that were due, one to do a mediation of the mold. And only place I can find where a mediation might be needed, and I'm not saying it's not, is around the perimeter of the west wall, near the ground, the house. What I found, the flowerbed was too high, and water was peeping through those two posts. If you look at the bottom bricks, they have an eighth of an inch hole for the walk, for the bricks can breathe, and water was protruding into the hole, so they dropped that down. This last rain, there was just one section where I saw the possibility of water getting in. Now, if those downspouts in the trough inside the walls are leaking, then you could also have water overflowing into the walls, so. Uh, remediation, I would also, remediation is only done after you seal the roof.
Right, I, I, I would, my question just was, this is the same possibility, if, if, when we voted for the first, I was got the same possibility with the roof, did it?
Yeah, I, I can't find anywhere where a third party expert inspection was done.
She, she, but she had, uh, the guys from my check, people from, I look at the mold, and look at the roof, and I don't know where I know.
I, I can't find anything on, that's what I'm saying before, that the, the, the smallest bed I saw was twenty-four thousand dollars. Now, it's from a reputable company, uh, Longhorn Construction, but I was just saying, maybe we need to back up a little bit, before we spend twenty-five thousand dollars, because you may not have twenty-five thousand dollars of leak up there. You got, you have some leaking, and it's in that downspout there, yes.
Do we have the grant for showing, uh, about any type of warranty we've been having?
The building was warranted for five years. Yeah, the building now is building oh eight, oh seven, so, it's out of warranty.
Oh, we have leaks, and we're happy, rain, we had.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, that, there is some repair that needs to be done, but I'm not saying you need to get up there with a spray gun and go liquid, pet plant, uh, uh, toss the whole roof.
No, I mean, when we first moved in here.
They, they got up there and repoxied. Yeah, remember, it used to leak like crazy in this wall back there, we, we repaired that.
But is it possible, if we do, exactly, if we do this, this inspection, do you see how you?
Yes, of course, no, I, yeah. Right, the floor would bring it back to go back to there, but consider to, you'll get a.
Well, I'm talking about the original construction.
Uh, it's in the, the, this building was built on a, on a, on a design-built contract. And a design-built contract is a, the general contractor that you hire, designs and builds buildings, and it's inspected by the city engineer during construction, but the design of this building, or the purchase of this building, for this, for that job, is done by the general contractor.
Did he give that back?
Yeah, yeah, he was, he was, he did it every time.
And we only had a six-year warranty on it yet.
Five, and I'll double check it, but that's. So that's on the, thank you. Yeah, it was inspected during construction, I have, I have work to do. Oh, I, no, I can't find it, somewhere, anyone came out and did this, right, I, I have the paperwork where they gave some estimates to go up and seal a complete roof. But my, the nervous of the knowledge of where this roof is designed, the only place you're going to get leaks is in those downspouts, and they're all around the perimeter and across that top B of the building. That's downspout.
So, so when the, when the building was first built, she said, first rain, the roof started leaking, first second rain, third. So, then they had, they came.
They came back out.
So shouldn't that have been the warranty? Uh, because that, that's, that's manufactured error, so that, the, that's a new roof, in my opinion, so the warranty starts at the time of that roof being empty.
Uh, the design-built, they'll bill it, I mean, I, I, subcontractor company that built it based on the engineering of the, the general contractor. Yeah, it's, it's, but my, my only kno- my knowledge of them is that they worked on several spots, and there's one.
I'm not sure, we should have to come out, come out, I think, because I've been on the office for two years, and we should be convinced, and that's just after, after five years, to catch the rate, or as well, not even so. I mean, I think, I think if we can hold the Congress for, so, starting from, then, if we can, if we can back to the cost, I think, that would be a lot, a lot of.
Alright, okay, I think legal.
It may, it may not, it may not work that way, but it's, it's something that we can definitely.
Then I would have to defer that to legal, and, and I was sitting in here, but.
Especially probably twenty-four thousand dollars.
That's, and that's the smallest bed that I've seen come in. And mediation is, is supposed to happen, so you don't want to do one until you make sure you got the other one taken care of.
But how soon, how soon could we have the independent guy, because if, if, if water is getting in this building, and slowly, slowly, it's totally getting worse, and we have people working.
I, I can have the, if I can locate one, I can have the independent contractor assessment back by the next council.
On the roof?
Yes, on the roof.
Sorry, the mold?
The mold, I would not recommend moving on remediation on the mold until you know you've got roof.
Right, right, yeah. But right now, just somebody is keeping the hand down.
I mean, we can go with the twenty-four thousand dollars.
No, 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 we can, we can. We can, uh, I'm just saying, I, I think, whatever we do, it needs to be done, you know, yes, because, just, I'm not interested in y'all doing it, you know, so, just don't have to leave out.
That's how you want to go, I just, just a suggestion.
But I, I'd love to take the, with the independent, with the independent inspection, but I also think this is.
I'll talk about legal.
Maybe, maybe I'll come and do it at this kind of price, you know, to, to, some.
And it's, it's all in the design as well, I mean, there's different, many designs for these kinds of buildings.
So, uh, you need to finish, you want to start it, when that?
Yes, if you want to go that route.
Now, for, uh, that one, you're giving us that, how you have it? Yeah, you want to, uh, start and go out and do it, get an inspection, uh, is there a cost of inspection?
Uh, the cost, I'm told, is less than a thousand dollars. Someone want to get up there, and what they call blue light the whole time.
But if we contract the original builder, who, uh, to, a roof repair, would they send somebody up there to do it, because that's easy to.
Well, I can talk to Longhorn Building, but you know who's originally built it. Longhorn, Longhorn with a subcontract.
They with a subcontract. Longhorn, yeah. That's the one that's twenty-four thousand dollars down.
Right.
I think we need to go, seeing, Longhorn roof coming in, and roof, since they put the roof coming in, and roof stop, they should.
They, they, they built, but they don't build, I mean.
Yeah, they put out errors.
So what's your, Mr. Jones, we're going to get the inspection, come in, we're price one inspection, we need three, three bids on doing inspection, so the council, continue.
Huh, follow whatever council wants, I'm trying to frame something up there before you go, spend that time on it.
I was going to listen, do you really need to bring the bid for the inspection back to us? Well, I'm just asking, no, I'm asking, no, but can you just take the bid, and take the cheapest bid, and get the inspection, because if, even, even level one has to have a special meeting, because you're not just going to be it till April, till you get the bid, and have to like another month, until, and then just.
Unless you want to have a special session, uh.
We just talk about stuff, and nothing being done.
Unless you want to have a special session on it, but I can tell you what that's set up, so I can.
Can you ask them, put it on, if we're, if we expect to give you our, our, what is right, on what is wrong? That's what you asked.
And, and just some knowledge of the building.
I don't know how the council feel, I, I thought he's, he's going to give him a going, just probably cheap as inspection, and what can, and bring back what the inspector says, and find out, what, find out who the inspector's going to be, and find out what the inspector says, too much language, and. You're having to go off the bids, pretty much after that, for the roof, and then, six, was that maybe, the bids that for the roof? So, I move that, uh, we, uh, both postpone bidding, the bidding process for the city, our roof repair project, allow open inspection, not used to determine, to show, uh, the what's required for the pair, and then, Mr. Jones, uh, seeks, puts the bids out, and, uh, gets the, uh, who was in the list there?
That this is the only first factor.
One, second, right. We move forward second, that we may, Mr. Jones, to go out, or, uh, take these, uh, independent contracts, to do, uh, inspection of, making, of, lowest investment, and bring those forth back to the council. You have the motion and secondly, red, purple, what?
What's that?
I'm telling you kids by saying aye.
Aye.
A type A serves two years, a type B can serve up to six years. I mean, a type A serves six years, a uh, a uh, a type B serves two years. Now, the other question, can that be reappointed? In according to my reference to Mr. Larnie, the Attorney General gave an opinion. Uh, matter of fact, John Collins, who is the Center for the Great State of Texas, as Attorney General, he gave an opinion on his opinion, J C dash zero three four nine, as relates to a type A, since it's in, since it's interpreted as statute dealing with specifically with a type A corporation. That being said, there is no statute prohibiting a type B from reappointing a member to a sequential term. I think the E D, the A G would reach a similar conclusion for a type B E D C. A city can reappoint the same person to a sequential term unless prohibited by the bylaws or articles of the corporation. And that's from Bayonne Legal Counsel, Texas Municipal League. And the good thing, ladies and gentlemen, our attorney, Ms. Leah, has pulled the article of incorporation from the state website. And she has that information in which that it have no limits. So therefore, individuals can be reappointed at the pleasure of the the city council. I'll turn it over to Ms. Lee to give her the closing comments.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that the Secretary of State has the articles of incorporation. Anyone can access this information. You do have to pay uh, to get access to this information. But uh, the articles of incorporation filed August sixteenth of two thousand states, according for the corporation uh, that there will be members and there is no term limit specified. So the number of directors constituting the Board of Directors is that. Uh, so because there is no provision in the Articles of Incorporation that limits the number of terms a director can serve, uh, the council is free to make a reappointment as proposed in the amendment.
So with that being said, members of the council, we're asking for re- reappointment of Mr. Pervis Thomas. We're asking for reappointment of Dr. Michael Prince. And we have two individuals we'd like to see appointed to the Board of Directors. One is Ms. Judy Daniels, who is a local business person here in our community. Another one is a former mayor, Mayor Ron Levitt, who has extensive knowledge in economic development and community affairs. We bring these names forward and ask for your full support on the reappointment and the appointment of these members to the four B board for two-year term. The other members, they're not up, they're not up for uh, for reappointment at this particular time.
Articles of incorporation, that Articles of incorporation.
Yeah, four B.
The, the city incorporated four, four A corporation and a four B corporation. The four A corporation was forfeited in two thousand two. So the only thing that remains is the four B.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, and the, and the, these are the city's articles?
For the city's incorporation of the four B.
The city's articles can't supersede the city's articles.
No, they, what happens is if you, if you form a corporation, any corporation, whether it's private or public, you have to file the Articles of Incorporation with the Secretary of State. So those are the documents that were filed by the city. I'm assuming your attorney at the time prepared those documents to me.
But that's the things and the state statute, they say six years.
No, they, they do not state six years for a four B corporation. There are two types. There's a four A and a four B.
There are two types, and we are four Bs, so we plan to type A.
So the uh, the A G opinion that was referred to earlier and the statutes that were mentioned earlier in the public comment section are for a four A corporation. They're not for a four B. And so uh, Councilmember Thomas read it from the statute directly as it relates to a four B. And there's no mention of a term limit or a number of terms that you're limited to serve.
How many years, have you been in the reassignment? Uh, this is my uh, paper. How many years have you been a four B? And so the question was asked, if he was carried from there, if he was fully on four B, would we have to step down?
There, there is a statute that deals in uh, section five oh five point oh five two restriction on board membership. This is for the chapter that deals with the governments of the four B corporation. It says that three directors of a type B corporation must be persons who are not employees, officers, or members of the government body of the authorized municipality. So as long as three of the seven members are not uh, employees or councilmembers, then you're okay. Or the mayor.
I would like to see um, us continue on here, those folks who are on there only. If there are other residents or citizens who are not interested. To have the same people on there all the time. And we have fresh, fresh blood, fresh ideas. New people coming in, but there are no other people interested. That would be the only reason, you know, I would even want my reappointment, when I'm up for reappointment. If there are new citizens, if there are citizens out there who are interested in doing things, I think we should be given an opportunity. We've been on here for ten years, twelve years. And we need to.
We opened up the application, I know uh, well, two applications came in.
So how many have come to come after?
It's three, two. Well, now we have three, so I think, uh, moved on to the uh, app.
What would be uh, would it be appropriate to appoint the two new people and reserve the reappointment until the next meeting and maybe give people time to get their application in? Because I know there was a gentleman in Alphabisten who thinks that I don't want to be in the app or not. So would that be appropriate for this particular?
You could make a motion, uh, as you're stating in your motion, and uh, if it's seconded and passed, that would be fine. The legal effect of what that would do though, the, the people who are on there, they would continue to serve until another appointment.
Correct, I understand. So I make that motion. We appoint these two new people. And the people who are on here continue to serve until uh, till the next meeting. Do we get additional applications or get interested to?
Now, uh, let's make the motion now, the recommendation of an application, they have to be uh, recommended for the appointment, am I correct?
Yes.
That was the, that was my question. Who, who's recommending the appointment?
So here again, uh, the, the mayor appoints all boards of corporations.
I know he makes the appointment, but who gives him, who from four B has given him, who's receiving the application, giving him the recommendation?
There's no provision in your home rule city charter for a recommendation process for the mayor. So the mayor has discretion as to how he arrives at his uh, appointees.
So what I'm saying, so the people who are going to be appointed are going to be receiving the, the? They, they come, they come to the city, they come to the city, uh, they can go through the website and they can apply the application. And they can submit a grant to the city's secretary, the city's secretary, secretary, sheriff, and the mayor.
Yeah, I made the motion that we appoint the uh, Judy Daniels, the mayor of Ron Levitt. And we postponed the reappointment. They will continue to serve, but we just postponed the reappointment. Those individuals are beyond the, the.
Department of Reports, Administrator Report.
All right, just one major thing, uh, today we issued, the permit is now active for Dallas June, check that right one. And they're saying sixty to ninety days it'll be up and running. Uh, weather permitting, they, they went through the Bureau Veritas death audit, the crime doctor death audit, the safety inspectors death audit, death review. And they picked up a permit for that, so they will start construction uh, meeting. So you stuck one on down there. They've also paid for their capacity, so they, they, they're ready to go.
Completely.
Sixty to ninety days.
So the city, are we gonna have a, have a grand opening ceremony?
Definitely. The council's getting off. The, the other major permit that's still on for review and should be ready for, for permitting in the next week or two is Low Camp. Low Camp is a million and a half dollar expansion down there. Uh, they submitted all their plans, their plans are being uh, planned to be by Bureau Veritas, as we speak. Uh, the safety inspector's already gone down there and walked the plant and the line that was in the process with the integrity. So that is within our care well.
Now, the gas, the, that the gas line was also, it's uh, while, while the city, while it's running the gas line to uh, the way it's pressed. And they're on a temporary seal and Mr. Barn Dope, I guess, is working with them down there right now to try to, when that gas line is there, to have them set up to be open and watch it. That's what they're waiting to do at the moment.
But we get sales tax, you told me. Cause I know they use a wallet, do you think?
Yeah, we do. They, they do, we do get, we sell tax, we get, we get their property tax and little sales taxes they have. Uh, they're active, their ten-year payment ran out last year, so I think it's either last year or this year, so they're, they're on the tax. Yeah. And we're, we're getting calls now for other development projects, it's still calling, so we're, we're gonna put that out there until we get something concrete. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Good evening to the mayor, city councilman, uh, department heads, and the citizens of the city, afraid of you. Uh, I have to apologize for not being at the last meeting. Uh, I forgot that y'all changed your meeting date from Tuesday to Monday. I came Tuesday, and I said, we just coming down here. But anyway, you had my reports here. It was a December to January reports. I'll look, you got any questions about those reports before I move on to February? If not, I'll move on to February. I did email you all and give y'all some of my comments that I would have had in email. If not, then we can move on to February. And in February, just turn to page one. Page one will show that we have funds of a million five versus a budget of a million two. So that's three hundred thousand dollars favorable variance. Uh, we incurred expenditures of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand versus a budget of a million two. So that's a favorable variance of two thirty-six on overall favorable variance of five forty-three. Uh, page one, excuse me, page one. Yes.
Is this page one?
Yes, right.
There's a one on the side of the chart, it's like on here.
What page, what page y'all have first? Well, okay, and, and waiting for, for that, let's go to page two. Y'all got page two, okay. Wait one, come back. Okay, on page two, again here, I, I'm presenting this a little bit different from in the past where we would just give you one month. So what we're doing, we're gonna bill all twelve months so you can uh, have an idea of how your bank balances are fluctuating from month to month. And you can see currently that uh, our bank balance year-to-date change rather is a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And I want to reference that, go to page, go to page three now. Do you have a page three? Okay. Page, page three has the same information from page one as far as the actual data is concerned, that, that five hundred and twenty-nine thousand that I referenced. And I bring this up because that, that's saying that, okay, we have an increase of funds of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand through the month of February. But if you look at how we actually expended those funds, you'll see that at the bottom here is that we really only have an increase of a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars from the cash that we have. And that's why it's, it's, it's so uh, important that I relate this to you. Uh, because if you look at the activity below the, the line that shows the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, you'll see that we've expended funds for the fourth main and High Point, large fluid meters. And uh, we spent money on the James Hughes line extension there. And the timing difference, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand in there, that, that, that's basically the timing difference between uh, it, uh, when you show revenue and receiving the money. So there's a timing difference there. And uh, also, we had to pay some prior period debt of sixty-six thousand and thirty-six hundred dollars for the prior period adjustment. So it's important that, that you look at page three. Okay, what happened on that? We got a uh, a bill for the dog catcher in the month of November for the entire year of two thousand fifteen. The, the animal control person, the animal control person. And for whatever reason, the bill was for twelve months. I don't know how that happened. But the bill, it didn't come in until November after we closed the books. We had to make an audit adjustment for that amount of money. It was for six thousand dollars and it offset by some revenue of three thousand. That's why you only see a net of thirty-six hundred. But we didn't, we didn't, we, since we had closed the books, we could not go back into the year fifteen and show that expenditure. But we had already closed the books. So therefore, and it wasn't paid until November of this period. Cause the invoice didn't come in until November of fifteen, but the invoice was January through August of two thousand fifteen. And I don't know why that happened, but I spoke with the police department now and those bills should be paying on a monthly basis of course. How can you verify that what was on this, a year's invoice, that, that was, all that's on there was actually done? And so it has to be verified on a current basis. There have to be some verification, and I am checking with the police department now to see just that they are getting verification on an ongoing basis. No, it should be verified as soon as they, they, they do whatever they do. And I'm hoping that they would even come by and show City Hall or somebody here that, hey, we got, we talked to, what we had to do, and then go back and invoice.
But even, even so, did the police department maybe check with him? And said, you have an invoice, we haven't got your invoice. Did you have the invoice for us?
You're absolutely right. But it was a situation there that we couldn't do nothing about, it happened. And so that's how that got uh, uh, included in this particular month's activities. And by doing a prior period adjustment, that way we don't show the expense in the current period because it would be misleading as far as your expenditures go from the standpoint of what year they, they were incurred. Okay, let's go to page six. On page six, I just want to bring your attention, the uh, property tax. One of the reasons why we do have a variable cash position now is because of the, we've collected right at seventy-three point four percent of the total property taxes that, that have been assessed. If you look at the top line, you'll see today we've collected two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. The budget's showing one fifty-one, cause the budget is based on an equal average over twelve-month period. So it'll start declining uh, probably with the month of March as far as that variance goes. But again, I want to bring that to your attention, and, and we anticipate, so this is a high watermark as far as your cash goes. What's gonna start happening now is as we go to the next month, your cash position will start to decrease. Because we're not going to be, as you can see, we've collected seventy-three point four percent of our property taxes. And that's our major revenue that we have. And so as we go forward, then we won't be collecting as much property taxes. And those variances will start decreasing. And hopefully our cash will not decrease to the point where that we get into a critical phase, but we will be monitoring it to uh, make sure of that. Uh, also, if you look at the first line of expenditures there, let's go to page ten. And on page ten, let's look at salaries and wages. In the current month, you'll see wages of fifty-nine thousand, a hundred and twelve thousand, which is somewhat greater than what we budgeted of thirty-three thousand. And the reason why you have that, and again, we're not incurring, incurring any, any costs for a police chief right now, but the reason why you have that is that in the first paycheck in February, we paid excess comp time.
Are we keeping an eye on that comp time now so that does not happen again?
Working with Mr. Jones, and Mr. Jones is working with Ms. Shannon. And then they can only, they're kind, they're kind of at a disadvantage. The disadvantage is this, is who's actually administering the police task? Who tells them whether to approve, accept additional comp time or not? And that's basically falls with you, I guess.
I think if you continue this line of discussion, you're getting off with a financial report. Uh, because it's getting into personnel.
But anyway. But those amounts were paid this past month on one paycheck. And that's why you see that amount in the current month there. Okay, let's go to page twenty-five now. Yeah, twenty-five. And on twenty-five, this is Public Works, this is the, the P and L for Public Works, the profit and loss statement. And I bring to your attention the lines for repairs and maintenance. And if you look at that line there, you'll see for the current month, we incurred fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And look at the year-to-date. Year-to-date is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight fifty-one versus a budget of seventy-six thousand. And we're currently over budgeted by forty-six thousand there. What has been happening, that we're experiencing uh, an extensive amount of repairs at our lift stations. And I've got to give a friend and look at that and see just what's, what's happening there. In other words, is it possible that there might be some work that we might can do, some upgrades that we might can do to have to prevent the type of, it's, it's been across the board. It's been electrical, it's been mechanical, it's been pumps, it's been across the board. And we have, he has that detail. And so now, and we have the locations. And so we will be able to do some extensive analysis in this area and see if there are some, some strategies that we might can move into. And we might have to look at approving some expenditures of some of the bond money out there. But if we can. Well, what we're referencing now is past, this current fiscal period.
Right, right.
We spent a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars through the month of February for this current fiscal period.
Right.
Versus a budget of only seventy-six thousand dollars. So again here, and, and, and if you, and this has been a drawdown on our cash position in Public Works because if you look at Public Works on page twenty-three, you'll see that the amount of cash is thirty-six thousand dollars, eight sixty-eight, that we have in the bank. And that's a, a, a low, a low watermark as far as the cash available. We can't use the cash that you see on page twenty-three in the escrow account, the seventy-six thousand, because that's what we have on, that's the uh, the deposits that people have made for their Y deposits. And so you can't use that for operations. You have to maintain that as a part of their, of their escrow. And so I just bring that to your attention, that that's, that's a, a situation there that it's occurring and it's real. And so again, the Department of Utility Department is looking into what, what can take place there. Uh, one other point now is to go to page thirty-three. Just want to let you know that if you look at page thirty-three, that's debt service, and that's the, that's the balance sheet. And that's the amount, I want to reference the amount of cash that you see available in that service. A hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine forty is there to pay the uh, the big bond that's coming due, the two thousand eleven bond. It's due, uh, it do right now, they're gonna do an automatic withdrawal from bank account. So we have to make sure we have enough money in the bank because you don't know when that automatic withdrawal is gonna hit. And it should be roughly probably around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we make sure that we do have the funds in the bank to cover the automatic withdrawal. Because as you know, they don't give you any variance if you don't have any funds up at that bond thing. It will affect the bond ready. And so we're doing our best to make sure that we don't have any uh, uh, thing happen where that those payments are not made. With that, that's all I have to report tonight. Uh, again, giving you situations there in Public Works that we do have to address and we will to address in those, in those operations, trying to sit and direct with the mayor and trying to see just what we can do in those areas. And if y'all have any questions, feel free to give me a call. You got any concerns that you might have, feel free to do that, you know. Any other question that you might have for me?
Any question for Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, citizens, uh, councilman, mayor. Uh, you guys uh, have a police department report. While you're looking over that report, I would like to mention on uh, issue that we've been having on the board. We have some, our target areas for E D, excess E D. Uh, we're looking at Owens Road, the White Chapel, and Richards Hill. So far, on Richards Hill, White Chapel, off the, missing people, tickets and assesses seventy-five miles an hour. Uh, got a call from uh, DPS that lives out there, uh, couple minutes on uh, starting to crack down on that road. And also reached out to DPS and constable to uh, give us a hand out there controlling those uh, speeders out there. They are really, really going fast and it's a matter of time before we have a serious incident. Matter of fact, uh, thanks to a couple students who are talking on campus about uh, getting suicide cases uh, for uh, and assesses seventy-five miles an hour uh, from a ten-month ago. So we, we there, uh, taking care of that and I'm on the other side of what's going on. But like I said, we do have a joint effort with our DPS and the constables off of the part of personnel and speeding out there. Uh, so again, I have a report, I have any questions on this.
You were asking about overtime?
No, what, what we're doing for overtime, uh, on a weekly basis, I make sure that the uh, officers are getting uh, a particular time. That way it's bringing it down. So every week, uh, I'm giving uh, officers a time. So we're, we're, we're paying close attention to it. And we're not letting comp time and uh, holidays and stuff uh, add up. So as, as we get the holidays, uh, or give the dormant expenses, we have to prepare. And I say every week, on the schedule, time I've got uh, to come in.
Uh, question for me?
Another question. Detective, if you have any problems, you're probably trying to call the government, you know, they're reporting much of the school.
I have a question. The USDA rule to get along, stay in the pool, that one does about twenty-five thousand? Very dangerous.
Yes.
Okay. And this comes just for the month of...
It comes...
I mean, this report...
This report comes the last, the last week we had.
Until today?
Yeah, and the calls that we have on here, the calls that we're calling children, we need to... Two thousand dollars to Mexico.
So why aren't you calling?
Uh, not installed yet.
Since I had some trouble with the entry to the two, two office, uh, street outside?
Right.
And so it wasn't...
No.
Okay.
We can tell you what happened. Uh, any questions about fire here?
Next slide, my mayor council reports. So, Councilor Miller.
I have your question.
Councilor Miller. Oh, this, the biggest thing, myself, Councilman Thomas, Ms. Duro, Ms. Jackson, we've been working on is... Is the process of getting the smart meters installed for the city of Prairie. So we've been meeting in different areas. We have a couple Saturdays, we've been focusing on meeting in more areas. And in hopes of getting a smart water meter system that's going to help aggregate shit, that helps with customer service, that's going to improve the overall way of how we handle the water here in the city of Prairie. So we're working to make everything more efficient as far as more transparent ways. And we do it to allow US citizens to monitor your own water consumption. And you can receive alerts if you have a consumption that's contrary to what it usually is and whenever your bill is reaching a certain level, you can set this level, when you get a text message or email. And so, we're working through the process now and for hope that after this was, we'll have a company in mind and we can start initiating that process, you know, by the summer time is our goal. So, as always, I thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's always a pleasure, and it's election time, fortunately, for me this year, for those who are running, for people who are voting, to ask you to get to know your candidates, you know, and search their hearts. Because the seat, the seat isn't as easy as it looks sometimes. And if people are sitting for the right reasons, then a lot of things that we tend to do, or we want to do, won't happen. So I have to do this, continue to do this, hold this accountable, and continue to fight with us as we continue to push forward. Thank you.
I pass out my report. If you did not get a copy of the report, they are on the back table as you leave.
Pleasant and wonderful evening, friends and neighbors, members of the council. City of Prairie, we have come too far to come back now. More can't, wasn't by accident. Dollar General wasn't by accident. The Wade Gas Station wasn't by accident. This is used Parkway Development wasn't by accident. We have come too far to come back now. We have people who are willing and ready to work on behalf of the city. Give them opportunity to work. And if you're anything that they want to be part of this movement, tell them to join us and come help us work. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of heavy lifting, and everybody can do their part to make a difference. Recently, the university hosted a ribbon card ceremony at the pantomac. That wasn't by accident. It's on the outside, right access to the community where we can come and instead of doing campus, we can take ourselves out on a date. And if you, you know, my birthday is in the month of April, so let me all know. You can take me out. I'm cheap, I'm easy, I'm available, so come and, come and take me out. My wife will join us as well. Whatever you said, the council member Randall mentioned that we're working on the smart meter. Just imagine, you saw the presentation earlier, just imagine you can go to your computer or just pick up your phone and you can track your water usage. Ladies and gentlemen, this stuff is not by accident. We have come too far for you to come back now. And some people been doing some heavy lifting. We had opportunity tonight to endorse those people and keep them going. But City of Prairie, we have come too far to come back now. Look here, if you're looking for jobs, if you have special skills, the university is getting ready to do a Phase Seven development on the campus. They look for fully with air-conditioned experience, with concrete work. They're getting ready to build a one-hundred-and-ninety-one unit apartment on campus. The university is growing, must grow, must grow. As it relates to a mandate by the state of Texas. Ladies and gentlemen, the City of Prairie has come too far to come back now. And now is not the time for us to be turning back. Had an opportunity to meet with other economic development directors. We went and we visited the Dyken Organization. Ladies and gentlemen, they're not looking to have four thousand employees. They opt to buy one more thousand, they don't wanna have five thousand employees. And they're looking for places to live. Prairie is a beautiful place to live. So if you, if you're interested in building all the photo board halls, five thousand people's gonna be coming to this area. We have come too far for you to come back now. Have y'all seen it, the lights? In that subdivision that's been accentuated? And we can turn our eyes to giving lights everybody around the cap, around the community? What God said, let that be light? And there was light? Prairie, we have come too far to come back now. We need to get lights not only on that street, but on other streets that need it as well. Let's get this policy in place, council, because we have come too far to come back now. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna raise my hand because I have come too far to come back now.
There's a candidate's forum every night on this campus parade, hosted by this lady, Harris. She's an instructor on campus. So we got to get one of the, some of the candidates for mayor, for city council, they'll be at this forum. I'm also gonna be at the forum, I'm already gonna pose, but I still will be there answering any questions you have with me.
Councilman Department?
Yeah, I'm for it.
I have copies of the reports on the desk, a couple of highlights. And first, I appreciate the system of Prairie, and I appreciate you allowing me to serve you for the past fourteen years. We want to keep working on the water and wastewater system, as Mr. Johnson brought up earlier. That's pretty much our biggest investment, our water wastewater system. And it's been an ongoing struggle. When we encourage all the candidates for mayor and city council to really get to know that system. That's your license. And the pumps originally had to be changed now, undersized, it's been an ongoing struggle. The bond took care of a lot of that, but it was, we were only able to get a four-point-seven-eight million dollar bond, but we needed much more. And in the present years of the city, the tax rate is artificial at low, like twelve cents per hundred-dollar value. So you didn't have enough money for, to do anything with. People only paying five dollars and eighty-five cents a month for all the water, sewage, garbage, everything. So it's been some heavy lifting to get it to this point. It's not, it's not an easy task. And so, you know, I must commend this council, and the council for this, and the citizens for... I've been taking that burden to tax us. That's why I tax it. Because we have clay pipe in the ground, and a lot of the pipes are gone. It's just, so this is a, it's a ongoing struggle. So the extension of the line on Richards Hill, the Infiltration Parkway, that should be some of the reversals we should get back from that EVA grant. We're trying some of that money that's been on that. But our water wastewater system is rated. You can stand out of trouble with two C Q, and we still have our superior water rate. We have good water in the city. Infiltration is gonna be a problem, because in the early days of the sewer line putting in, was being put in. The city fathers decided to run the lines where they wanted to run the lines. So some of them had a map, some of them didn't have a map. We've been tracking all those lines down over the years. And some of them are in the ditch, some of the manholes are actually in the ditch. So they have to be raised up, and we've been finding them out in fields. So it's gonna be an ongoing struggle. So I encourage the guys that are running for the office to get some boots and be ready to go find these lines, these manholes. So it's, it's still gonna be a challenge. And that groundwater goes into the system, and you can, you can put a bill to flood those lines, but it's still a flood. Emergency services with the city, and I would briefly speak to the fire department report. We did tell from local HSA, you know, the government, that was a good idea note. And I wanna thank the city of Prairie, the city council for helping us with that. Of course, the building is old now, and we're asking that you look at repairs on the building, the roof, the doors, all of them need to be repaired. So here, we want to thank you for the time for helping us to improvise those services and all those firefighters serving local coffers to the city. And we've been running pretty regularly here lately, and it's quite taxing. But emergency services are coming along. We got an opportunity now to work with the university on emergency operations center. They were able to get funds from the state to build an emergency operations center that the city fathers can retreat to in case of emergencies. And you have state or art displays, and you can actually make decisions on the assets that are out there. And also utilize assets, not only at the university, but throughout Water County. We finally get to the point where Water County is starting to work as a unit. So fire, emergency services, we're all operating pretty much on a mutual aid agreement. So that's very important, that we keep those relationships intact. And the idea is to drive down our insurance costs and give a good insurance service rate. We're shooting for a lease of three. Right now, we're at about a six on a ten scale. So to drive it down to a one would be monumental, but if we get it down to a three, I think we'll be doing good. And I think, I'll take the head departments, city, and Water County with it at this time. But the support that we get, the training that we go through, all the camps towards that, and our water system being brought up to code is often a hit with the ready. And that's done by the state and the... The school system, again, is a milestone for the city to... They purchased the land for the new Jones Avenue that's going in on San T Street, on Orange Road. So that's now gonna be developed. We told you years ago that this was gonna happen, that whole Orange Road's gonna be developed. It's gonna have to be widened. So whoever's running for county commissioner's gotta work with the city fathers to widen and put turn lanes in. Future projections show that's gonna put a covered rodeo arena out there and other retail is going along Orange Road, probably all the way down to New Parkway eventually. They talked about the housing units, and those private developers that are building units, and we encourage them to build, because the population will grow. And you'll see a lot of, more folks coming in here, because Prairie has hit that tipping point. And we've on the downside of it now, so the pace has gone quicker. And so it's gonna be a demand on our services, on produce, buy, utilities. It's gonna pick up now, at a rapid pace. And I just ask everybody to work together. That's why it's gonna be important during these elections that you have a cohesive group that'll work together, because it's gonna take that. That's the only way we're able to do anything, is that we have a cohesive group, call it what you want. But we got it done, and it's gonna take that kind of same cohesiveness from this council to get it done. And I would really encourage that. But it's easy to criticize, but it's hard to work together, so let's pull it together. And I would tell those that are running for mayor, whoever's elected for mayor, I'm gonna be an asset, I'm not gonna sit at this mic and cut you up. That's not what it's about. I'm not gonna kind of look for you to follow. I'm gonna be here to help, because I'm here to, and we're gonna have to work together. And that's the only way we're gonna act. So regardless of what they say, that don't bother you, I want you to be successful. And I would hope that their elected, their endless and the rest of us, former groups that we can work with, they come and bring in a special and offer some advice about some of the antagonists that are being categorized, like the... Economic development, part of New Parkway is gonna be a boon for the city. The idea of New Parkway was, that's where we stopped tilt wall construction. Walls mostly tilt walls and light manufacturing. We've been keeping most of our light manufacturing on the other side of the railroad tracks. When we hit that, the idea is Roy Perry wants to put a first-class innovation center. An innovation center, a ten-million-dollar funded center that will allow companies like Lockheed Martin and others to come in, and also for professors that are doing research at the university, and companies that build business accelerators and incubators, so they can launch new businesses. And that's gonna happen as soon as we finalize the bids and get the sewage and water on New Parkway. That's gonna be a signature piece for the City of Prairie, because that will give sewage and water, and it's gonna open, it's gonna open Prairie up for the government. So that's gonna be a boon for the city. The other piece is Thirty-Six Alpha. Keep your eyes on Thirty-Six Alpha, too. Now, need to really come to those meetings and go briefing. That's gonna open up Prairie, and it's moving, it's getting traction now. And he can tell you, even at the pantomac, he was there, he saw, and he knows what must come down the pipe. And he told the governor and others that are on board with this thing. And if they push it, Freeport will be a major container port for deep drought vessels. They're gonna deepen that harbor over fifty feet and bring in heavy containers coming to do Panama Canal. And they have ninety-seven percent complete with the canal. And that's gonna bring a lot of traffic. And if they build a freeway and plan Thirty-Six Alpha, it's gonna come right down James Lee's Parkway. Like that's so big. It's gonna come right down James Lee's Parkway. What that's gonna do for Prairie with the existing two-nine and the railroad that goes down to the city of Houston and Galveston, you're gonna be at the crossroads of international trade. You can't go to... And it took work from the county commissioner, it took work from the city fathers, the law to give us in that thing. But now, it's gonna happen. And you gotta keep your eyes on it, because that's gonna be a blessing for the city, or a backfire, because others gonna see the benefit to it, and they're gonna come at us especially if it's a highway device. The global alliance of mayors, New's African descent, again, I encourage those running for office to get involved in that. Because that connection with Africans in the diaspora, that's what these sister cities have been about. To start trade among Africans that have been scattered since slaves in the diaspora. And how folks make fun of post-traumatic slaves, that's a real issue. That's an article in Ebony Magazine that talks about that. The radio show that I did dealing with that was from psychologists, PhDs from San Francisco, from Atlanta. And they're talking about the trauma that we as a people took. The post-traumatic stress is real with militaries, with police. Anybody that's been through a trauma, they realize now that there has to be a recovery period. But with folks of African descent, since time of slavery, we've gone through trauma after trauma after trauma, with very little time to recover. From the time we were enslaved to the time we supposedly emancipated, we went to Jim Crow, we went to all that, except for the equal, the hang in the furnace, just lick after lick after lick after lick. And we have to recover from that. That's a real issue that we're gonna have to deal with as a people and understand it. So watch those MOUs, that's gonna be important. Dr. Wright was recently in Mexico, and he signed an MOU with just about all of the technical universities in Mexico. That's gonna lock us in, but a lot of students coming up from Mexico, they'll be coming up from Central America, from Belize, from South America, from Brazil. They're coming in from all over the earth. And so we look for a change in demographics. So that's something we're gonna have to be on guard for, and make sure that we have the kind of city we want. Transportation, the university wants to be a partner with transportation. They now that... They now that shuttle bus system that goes around the city, citizens can ride their transportation. It's not just for students, it's for citizens. Uh they partner with Colorado Valley Transit Authority, so they can, folks can get on that. You just need to know, you get on, you can ride it. And you, you know, have to drive in weather, uh you get on the bus. And you can get more information of that, uh that's important. Uh recreation, uh we're gonna have a dedication of the Santa Diane Park of on the fifteenth or something, I think that's what we set up. Fifteenth of April. Uh that park is uh, there's got to be some work on it. Uh I should have some documents to bring before the council here uh in the near future. Again, the university is offering to be a partner in this, and so a lot of those costs to mediate and all that, they, they're looking at what they can do to help in a, in a major way. So I just have to wait to get all of the files, documents, but if it can be done, they wanna, they wanna partner. Because they realize that we're all in this together. If university drives beautifully and looks good, they win, we win. Because new people coming in the Prairie View, they're gonna judge us by their look, by how we look. So if you got an amputating property, rundown, they're gonna judge us on that. But they got beautiful downtown Prairie View to look at, the light box, lights. It's gonna be, it's gonna make a difference. So don't kill that opportunity, repentance, that's, that's what I do. If in the very beginning, it has the university and the city partner to really develop this city, we'd be miles down the road, but it, but we end up fighting. And cases when all of it to the United States are pretty cool, and we still haven't recovered. There's a lot of hate and anger and deep wounds that's dark. We can do this thing, but we're gonna have to work together. Uh so be a mindful, we're gonna keep working with Santa Diane Park, the well is still is open for our use. I know somebody I've used, and I've been using it all summer. Uh I'm using it now, so it's uh, it's a benefit. Uh housing, uh it's gonna be a big, big deal for us. Uh the Orlando is gonna have a planted subdivision. Uh we met with the planning and zoning commission earlier. Uh we're about to take a look at our zoning map. Uh we look at our zoning artist and make sure that it's in compliance. We got into this dance with zoning, because people will be able to park this in subdivision, makes the folks home, bringing in trailer houses makes the folks home. And yes, it's painful, but we're gonna have to look at all of this stuff and make sure we got rules that we can all use. Uh Mr. Jones, we talked about that entrepreneurship and then cultural tourism. Uh Prairie View has been designated as repository for African-American history and culture in Texas. And that's, that's a big thing. And we haven't really explored the depths of our history to know that we are very significant uh in Texas. You can't talk Texas history like you talk this whole Walla County area. And it was Madison from down in Mount Zion, Sunnyside. I love to go down there, because they're right there at the point of where Texas really started. And if we can capitalize on tourism, that's money coming in the Prairie View and a lot of job opportunities for this state. Uh again, you're a big part of the university, and they want to talk to uh the city about their corner on Apple Street. And building a, a first-class museum and a cultural center. Uh so that they can bring in scholars and researchers to understand this, this diaspora and the, and the global impact of Prairie View. Because I think that's something that we need to uh continue to look at, uh dealing with the national uh endowment for the humanities. So we got some things that we can get done, uh and we can, but we'll have to work together and get them done. Uh and I, again, I appreciate the citizens for your support. Uh and I think going forward, the city's gonna be in, in good shape. Because regardless of who's elected, I think y'all all seen some pitfalls that we've gone through. And you don't want to repeat a lot of those steps. Uh with that, I will close out and we'll open up now for, is that announcement?
Executive session.
Re- reset the regular session for executive session, and there's one item to read.
Or do you want to leave and then this ends?
It's up to you.
Yeah, just an announcement, the city's birthday is on the fourteenth of April. Uh we're gonna have a, a, you in city hall, you have, you have something here, so we'll stay tuned for the announcement. Uh we may just call it a day of celebration when you come up and meet with everybody and uh I even give a state of the city a message that, that, that's in your name. Uh be one of my last addresses to the city. Uh I think we got a good city, it's a great city. Uh we've come a long way, we've got, we've got a lot of adversity that's obviously done because, so we've been able to find a way to work together. Uh if there, are there any more announcements before we do an executive session? Because I don't know how long this is gonna be, I just.
Uh Mayor Jackson, I don't think that anyone really understands what you're saying when you spoke about that African-American culture depository in Prairie View. And I think it was you, if I remember, when we were talking about it, it was Dr. President Hines? When y'all slipped the bill through and because you didn't attach any money, I'd forgotten. Uh because we were gonna put it over in old WR Banks Library back at that time. And I still have some money in the account that came down, but then y'all built Home Library, so the money's just been sitting. But I just wanted to let them know that was a, a thing, a bill that y'all slipped through. You know, primarily you with Dr. Hines, but I just remember thinking that was genius, because y'all didn't have any money attached to it. So everybody voted for it, y'all got it passed.
But it's, it's done, because our history has been lost in a long way. A lot of these black towns, a lot of the church, a lot of this stuff has been thrown, and we want them to bring it here too. So we can study and bring scholars here, cheers here, to Prairie View, thank you.
Uh the executive session, oh, you're gonna be up.
Yeah, that, uh what we're talking about is turning, instead of having.
Yeah, it's, it's totally up to you.
Instead of having all the citizens get up and leave, the council gonna go to the office. And let y'all see this.